Madam Secretary, do we have a forum present?
Madam Chair, we have a forum present.
The media has been appropriately notified as is required by FOIA and they are present. I welcome each one of you, those of you who are visiting us, attending the meeting on Zoom, on Facebook, and to those of you who are in the audience with your physical presence. Welcome. We're excited to see you and we're excited about embarking upon a brand-new school year. Let us observe now a moment of silence. Amen. Our thought for today, Ms. Israel.
Good evening, everyone. On this day, when my children are particularly strong-willed, I like to remind myself that I'm not parenting for the short term. I'm not parenting to have an obedient child today who behaves exactly as I would like them to. I'm parenting to have an emotionally healthy, confident, adult-driven child. A tough day today doesn't mean I'm failing as a parent or that my children aren't wonderful, sweet, caring people. It just means that today is a tough day and how I choose to handle it will teach them how to handle their own tough days. I'm Melissa Davis.
Thank you. Thank you for setting a positive tone for our meeting. I'll entertain a motion now for the approval of the consent agenda.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we amend the agenda.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion to amend the agenda. What is your amendment?
I feel that I would like a written letter to Superintendent Spearman stating the exact date and let it be put in writing when she planned to turn the operating authority back over to the district because at this point we do not have any any operating power.
We have a motion to amend the agenda for the board to develop a letter to Superintendent for a date of transition.
Second my motion.
All in favor, let it be known by raising your hand. Thank you. Any opposers? Motion carried. The board will develop a letter for Superintendent Spearman. I don't know if we need to actually add that to the agenda if it's been actually done. I don't know where to put that, but we will, um, let's put it under board items.
No, no. Can we just go ahead and deal with that now so we?
Your motion was to amend the agenda, to add that. We will add it under board items. Let us stand for Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains us, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We will now have the swearing-in of our new board member. Mr. Burgess, will you please come forward? Judge Williams, will you come forward as well? And Mr. Burgess, would you like your wife to hold the Bible for you?
Yeah.
Mrs. Burgess. Would you raise your right hand and place your left hand on the Bible? And repeat after me. I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
that I am duly qualified
that I am duly qualified
according to the Constitution of this state
according to the Constitution of this state
to exercise the duties
to exercise the duties
of the office
of the office
to which I have been
to which I have been
elected
elected
and that I will
and that I will
to the best of my ability
to the best of my ability
discharge the duties
discharge the duties
thereof
thereof
and preserve
and preserve
protect
protect
and defend
and defend
the Constitution of this state
the Constitution of this state
and of the United States
and of the United States
so help me God
so help me God.
Okay. Congratulations and thanks for serving the students, parents, and all citizens of the finest school district in the state and the finest county in the state. Thank you and congratulations again, Mr. Mag, Jay Burgess.
Thank you.
Mr. Burgess, please join us on the daze. Mr. Burgess, it is with sincere pleasure that we welcome you as our colleague to the Williamsburg County School District Board of Trustees. We believe that you possess the knowledge and skills that can help us as we embark upon moving this district towards its vision. With that being said, the vision of Williamsburg County School District is, in partnership with all stakeholders, the Williamsburg County School District will ensure a world-class education for all students by utilizing a rigorous, innovative curriculum that focuses on creativity, critical thinking, and problem-solving. Again, Mr. Burgess, we welcome you. I do have for you a copy of Robert's Rules of Order. Each board member has been given a copy and it is written in our policies and procedures. These are the guidelines that we follow and I present you with your very own nameplate. So please feel free to sit in front of you and we welcome you as our colleague and a bell servant.
Thank you, Burge.
You're quite welcome. Thank you, Judge Williams, for the oath. Public participation. The board welcomes public participation at all board meetings. Please be reminded that all speakers' remarks must be limited to three minutes or less. We ask that speakers be mindful that this is a business meeting and open to the public. This board asks speakers to conduct themselves professionally and that their comments remain civil and courteous, bearing in mind that they will be heard by people of all ages. This is an opportunity for Williamsburg County residents, community members, and parents or guardians to address the board about issues that serve the public interest and district mission and the board asks that speakers demonstrate appropriate decorum. Are there any public comments or anyone caring to make a comment at this time?
First, I'd like to thank Madam Chairman. I thank you for amending the agenda. But I have some special concerns about our district. I feel that I'm questioning those that are working on the behalf of the children. Or is there a hidden agenda somewhere or hidden groups with high-ends not involved? And the reason why I go into that and say that. On last week Thursday, it was Superintendent Molly Spearman visited CE Mother. Madam Chairman, why was it the media or the fellow board members notified? Did you know about that meeting?
I was notified 3:00 in the afternoon by Dr. Wilder about the meeting on that following Thursday, yes. I can't answer why the media was not notified. The media must have been notified because they were present.
So we didn't, the parents didn't know that the superintendent was coming, the state superintendent was coming in with all the chaos that's going on between the emerging, where many of the parents feel that there wasn't sufficient amount of planning. It seemed like the parents should have all, everybody should have known about this visitation. I think so.
We are taking your comments and we will provide a written answer.
Madam Chairman, I feel that the public needs to know who's representing them. I feel that you, Mr. Baker, Ms. Israel, Mr. Dix, Mr. Burgess, and Mr. Darby represent the citizens and the parents of Williamsburg County. This position is not ours. I have a problem because everything that the state, if you study the state, they have strategized, it seems as though the plan is divide and conquer. And all these other school districts that have been taken over by the state. It seems as though they have been planning to divide and conquer. I feel that we owe the citizens and the parents some type of explanation. We need to be visible if we're concerned about our students. But everything that the state has done, no one has questioned anything. Most of the members go right with it, but are you representing your people in your area? These decisions that are being made is not for just yourself, it's for the people.
Thank you very much. Mr. Darby?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to say ditto to some of the things Reverend Cunningham was saying, but I would like to know when the district is transferred back over, how much money will be on hand, fund balance, all those issues. So that we'll be sure that when the district is transferred, that everything will be in order. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Seeing no one else, we will move on down the agenda. It actually says review of Section B on board policies. All the policies for the Williamsburg County School District have been updated and brought into line with current laws of this county and of the state. The possible procedures were all done by the superintendent and her staff. Section B, which is board governance and operations, was done by this board. They have all been approved and they are on the district's website. Please review them at your leisure. I would like for everyone, especially the board members, to be sure again that we review the section on board policies and on our governance and operations.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to ask a question.
Yes.
I don't remember the meeting where the new proposals were approved. We were supposed to have a meeting for the approval, but I don't remember. Can you show me the document when it was approved?
I do not have the date. It may be posted on the website, but the board did not approve the policies. Because we are still under a state of emergency, Ms. Kathy Hazelwood, who is the attorney at the State Department of Education, approved all policies and procedures. And I can't get a date from you on when she approved them. That was out of the authority of this board.
Madam Chairman, let it be reflected that it seems as though we're being used as puppets. All of the decisions is being made by her and nothing is being brought to us. We don't have any type of power, any type of operating power. But we're going to be used like puppets before the public, but I feel that the public ought to know what's going on and who's representing them.
Thank you for your comments. I'll entertain a motion to approve the meetings from our last minutes, the minutes from our last meeting.
Madam Chairman, I haven't forgotten to approve minutes from our last meeting.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that the minutes be approved from our last meeting. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposers? Hearing none, minutes are approved as documented and posted. Our legislative update, Mr. Baker?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. We had a total of 272 bills that were signed or at least addressed by the General Assembly this session. Bills signed into law were 262. I guess none will wait the governor's signature, but none will pass without the governor's signature, let's put it that way. Bills vetoed and sustained, one bill. Bills vetoed and overridden, five bills. Vetoed pending, three. And a bill waiting for the governor's signature is one. I'm just going to highlight a few of the bills that address issues pertinent to education and the board and also the state board. Senate Bill 00969 ratified Board of Education. Provide every public school shall display depictions of the respective flags and mottos of the United States in South Carolina before January 1, 2023, provide related requirements of the State Board of Education and public schools, and to make these provisions applicable to private schools that receive any public funding. Senate Bill 0167, General Bill, Board of Education and Commission on Higher Education. A bill to amend Section 592620, Code of Law of South Carolina, relating to the duties of the State Board of Education and Commission on Higher Education, so as to provide the State Board of Education shall develop a scholarship program for circumresidents that intend on becoming certified teachers employed in the state in areas of critical need. Senate Bill 0202, Ratified General Bill to act to amend the Code of Laws of South Carolina by adding Section 1635, so as to provide under what circumstances the state inspector general may investigate certain schools. Senate Bill 0201, Ratified Public Schools. Code of Laws of South Carolina by adding Article, amend the Code of South Carolina, Code of Laws of South Carolina by adding Article 16, Chapter 18, Title 59, so as to provide accountability measures for public schools and public school districts. Senate Bill 0273, Ratified An Act to amend Section 59, 1960 Code of Laws of South Carolina, relating to the removal of school district trustees and filling of trustee vacancies, so as to provide the governor may remove trustees in certain circumstances, provide the governor may fill trustee vacancy, provide notice and hearing requirements, and to delete existing provisions concerning trustee removal and filling of vacancies by school boards. Senate Bill 0231, Ratified Student Identification Card Suicide Prevention Act. An act to amend the Code of Laws of South Carolina to enact the Student Identification Card Suicide Prevention Act by adding Section 591375, so as to provide student identification cards issued by public schools and public and private institutions in higher learning must include certain contact information concerning the national suicide prevention lifeline and certain other crisis resources. Senate Bill 3006, Ratified School Lunch Debt. An act to amend the Code of Laws of South Carolina by adding Section 593785, so as to provide public schools, public school districts, charter schools, and charter school governing bodies may not use debt collection agencies to collect or attempt to collect outstanding debts on student school lunch or breakfast accounts. House Bill 3589, School of Choice. An act to amend Section 59, 19350, Code of Laws of South Carolina, relating to the establishment of schools of choice exempt from certain statutes and regulations, so as to redesignate these schools as being schools of innovation, to clarify that public school districts may establish multiple schools of innovation and to provide procedures for obtaining and renewing status as a school of innovation. House Bill 3609, Teacher Salaries. A joint resolution to restore teacher step increases that were suspended by Act 135, 2020 due to financial uncertainties. House Bill 0946, Unencumbered Time for Teachers. Ratified An Act to amend Section 59, 563, Code of Laws of South Carolina, related to duty-free lunch periods for public elementary school teachers, so as to instead provide at least 30 minutes of unencumbered time on each regular school day for all full-time public elementary school teachers and for teachers responsible for instructing special ed classes more than 20% of the school day. There are several pending bills of note. General Bill, a bill to amend Code of Laws of South Carolina by adding Section 59, 2917, so as to require completion of certain basic personal finance coursework for high school graduation instead of existing economic coursework requirements. Provide high schools may continue to offer such coursework. This is personal finance education that we've been hearing about in the meetings. Senate Bill 0945, School Board Meetings. To promote public access to school board meetings and requiring school boards to adopt and implement policies that provide live electronic transmission of such meetings to extend applicability of these provisions to the governing bodies of charter schools and special schools, provide flexibility in certain circumstances and provide related requirements to the State Board of Education. Providing provisions of this act must be implemented before July 1, 2023. And then finally, Instruction American Founding Principles. This House Bill 3002, Pending, relating to American Founding Principles, instruction required of public schools and publicly supported colleges and universities so as to provide specific requirements concerning instruction in United States foundation, history, and public high schools to amend Section 59, 12130, relating to the duration of required American founding principles instruction, so as to limit its application to respective public institutions of higher learning, relating to the requirements that the states and superintendent of education prescribe certain texts for use and required American founding principles instruction. House Bill 3004, General Bill, Teacher Work Hours, a bill to amend the Code of Laws to suspending of South Carolina by adding Section 59, 25412, so as to provide public school teachers may not be required to work more than 37 and 1/2 hours each week without receiving overtime pay and provide remedies for violations.
Thank you so very much for keeping us current with updated legislation and pending laws that affect us. Board items. Under board items, there are several things we will address tonight. And each board member, this is a time that you will, of course, as at every meeting, can share. But I have that Molly Spearman, as you've heard, did visit the district on, I think it was Thursday that she came. I was invited by Dr. Wilder. She called and said that Ms. Spearman was coming into the district to tour the new CE Murray Elementary and Middle Schools to see how the new construction was going, how the building and everything was shaping up for the upcoming school year. It was not an open meeting. I don't recall the number, but I'm guessing there were about 12 people that toured the school with her. I did not get an agenda or a formal invitation from Ms. Spearman. But during a roundtable discussion, it was great news to hear because she announced at the roundtable discussion that the reasons that the state declared emergency for Williamsburg County have been cleared and there is no reason for the state to remain and that transition would be returning to the local board. She did not give a specific date. What she said was, it will be in a few months and it will be sooner than later. Definitely, and I'm quoting her here, definitely before she leaves office. With that being said, once the state leaves, the board will have to submit monthly progress or lack thereof reports to the State Department, not in a policing manner, but in a way that if we need assistance or require anything from the state, they are there and they are there to help us. As you are aware, when the state declares an emergency declaration over a district, the local school board has no authority. We make no decisions. Decisions are made by the state superintendent. She assigns a superintendent and they have control over the district. And I do want to say we have some board members that are absent. Mr. Duke, the vice-chairman, is absent tonight because his mother is ill. Mr. Floyd is absent tonight because of work details. Each board member, I've given you a copy of your district email and your password. Once you enter your district email, you may change your password to whatever you like. These are generic passwords. If you need assistance, Dr. Wilder has offered the technology department and if you call Mr. Young, he will, or his staff, will assist you with logging into your district emails. Under also board items, we have added to the agenda the request for a written letter to Ms. Spearman. Mr. Cunningham, would you be willing to draft that letter and submit it to me and then we will move forward with it?
If necessary, yes.
Thank you. We will hear from board members at this time.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir. Mr. Darby?
Thank you, Chairman Cunningham. Members of the board and members of public, happy that Members of the board and members of the public, happy that local board received its power back. Been four years, and I'm glad that you're asking for a specific date from the state. This is a dangerous trend in South Carolina. Sometimes other parts of the state take it lightly because state takeovers are mainly done in minority districts. But this is a dangerous trend, and an approach that are on our local school boards. It may be in Williamsburg today, it may be some other county in the future. There's too much interference from the state level and the legislative delegate groups into the operations of the schools. They must let the school board, local school board do its job. Those of the legislative delegation others must help with funding, not try and ruin. That has been happening too long in South Carolina. And we must also continue to work toward economic growth in this county, and that's the only way we're going to improve schools in the long run. I hope that we can, I'll say this one stop. The consolidation, we still need a new comprehensive high school, state-of-the-art in Williamsburg County. I hope that the state, who is so eager to take over, will be eager to give us the funding to do it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Darby.
Madam Chairman, I'd just like to say.
Yes, Mr. Cunningham, let me do one thing. I neglected to recognize in the audience, Mr. Urban Richardson. Mr. Richardson, would you be kind enough to tell the audience what it is you do for us?
Thank you, Madam Chair, for being here. My name is Urban Richardson. I am the regional vice director for the South Carolina School Board Association. So I cover Williamsburg County, Florence County, Darlington, and Clarendon. So what we do on the state level of the School Board Association, we're just a liaison, we're a voice to the legislative committee. We fight for public education, we fight for returning of schools back to the people from the state. So I definitely feel where you're coming from, I understand you, and we're here to fight for you and with you, your whole state. So please feel free to contact us at any time. Scott Price, Julie at the South Carolina School Board Association, myself. My information is online at SCSBA. I do know where the Dix has my information, and I'm always here to help if you find any way I can. Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here. Ms. Cunningham, Reverend Cunningham.
Madam Chairman, I'd just like to reiterate, I feel that it's important for us to push for citizens and the parents because Dr. Spearman, I don't know if she has our heart at interest. The combining of the schools, there was supposed to, from, at first, there was supposed to be a combined school plan, Hemingway, King Street, and St. Murray. But somehow or another, with these private meetings, and Madam Chairman, that is before the record, I am constantly stating who we represent. We represent the children and the parents. And I don't feel that it's fair for Molly to take over and come in and have these private meetings. It's another form of divide and conquer. No one or two individual makes up the board. The board is made up of seven to nine members. And I feel that it's not fair to the citizens nor to the parents for one or two individuals speaking on the hea-, I don't know if they're speaking because I haven't attended any of these meetings, but I don't know if they're speaking on behalf of the parents. Enough nepotism and the old buddy-buddy system has destroyed our county, our schools, and we don't need to continue with these private controlled power struggles. The citizens need to be heard. Molly did, she was very disrespectful, didn't even come over in, have the respect to come in and talk to the parents.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Chair, let me have a.
Mr. Hayward.
In regards to the school situation we had years ago, I mean, the situation was dire. The behavior was egregious, and the state had a move that was necessary, you know, to turn things around. And based on my experience being on the board so far, the job that Dr. Wilder's done, the job that the state superintendent's done, has been very good. I mean, the operation now is in the black. We don't have the types of malfeasance that were occurring in the past. You know, with this issue of property being in one county's name and some in the school district's name, and, I mean, there's a long list of things that went to happen, and a lot of states could, you know, stepped up and took control. And by the legislation I just reviewed, they can do it again, and they would do it again. So they went through the process of cleaning all of this up, and we need to consider moving forward rather than looking back. And I find it interesting that the two board members raising these objections were members of the old board.
Thank you for your comments.
Madam Chairman, may I make a comment?
I'm not finished. So I would say, we need to go forward and work together. We've got a policy established that really was not done before. Those policies, we've all agreed to, and we should move forward with that because we have to have, you know, a framework to work under, and that's how we should go forward. And we're here for the kids, we're here for the teachers, we're here for the parents, we're here for the schools. But like the issue of building a new school, one thing I think about, there's a lot of ways for people to get involved and maybe pocket some money in that process. When we're ready to have a school, when we can afford to have a school, we've got the revenue to build a school, then we can talk about building a school. But beyond that, you know, let's work together for the best of the kids. You know, why raise these issues that are said and done? We're not going to overturn anything, and I hope the votes aren't there to do that because to me, that would cause more disruption than what the takeover has caused.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Let me make one correction, and I think this is what Mr. Cunningham wants to speak to. There is actually only, just saying the fact, Reverend Darby, there is actually only one board member present tonight that was on the board during the takeover.
Okay.
That's a correction, no problem.
Madam Chairman, I would also like to say, I would like to comment on what he stated. There has been meetings, Ms., I.
Mr. Cunningham, unless you are prepared to give specific dates and times of private meetings that you know of, we will table that until you're prepared to present that information.
Then you just said that there was a meeting on last Thursday at St. Murray?
No, it was not a meeting. I said that Ms. Spearman came to tour the school.
Okay, well, Madam Chairman, let me say this. I'm constantly saying, when we have meetings, we're representing the people. And I remember it was made, it was a statement made by Mr. Baker. Now, he knows, he knows all this knowledge, and he just got on the board. And I made the statement, how are you all interacting with your parents, your community? And his comment was, what does that have to do with it?
Mr. Cunningham, thank you. We are going to move along with the agenda. Thank you very much. Ms. Israel, Reverend Dix, do you have a comment?
Let me just say, each one of these board members has some very bad points. But we've got to remember that the state is still in control. And with the state being in control, we don't make any decision, and I agree with Mr. Cunningham and Mr. Darby. I don't know, and I've thought about how I would feel if they had a meeting in Hemingway with all those folks in, none like me as the board member. You know, I try to put myself in their position. But be that whatever it is, I just think that we need to go ahead and move on, and do what we have to do for the children this time.
Thank you so very much.
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to say something as well. I was sitting here, listening to all the conversation, and I was debating on saying anything, but I'm just going to say this. As Reverend Dix said, we know that the State Department is still in control. They make all these decisions. And a lot has been said, and I think it needs to be addressed, because I hear the, you know, the tone coming from our board members, the concerns they have expressed, but it does need to be addressed because I'm very optimistic about moving forward. And moving forward as a cohesive board, working collectively together and working with our community, because all of our goal is at this time, is our children. Our children need to be able to graduate from Williamsburg County School District and be able to either go to college, a technical college, the workforce, the military, because our children have to be able to support themselves in this world that is forever changing. We have to educate our kids for jobs that don't even exist at this time, and that's our goal. And we have to get you together as a team. We have to work together as a team. But the matters that have been expressed, they do need to be addressed because if we don't address it, it's going to be hard to move on, and we have to move on for the children of Williamsburg County. That's why we're here, for our children and families of Williamsburg County. And just to see the beautiful things that are happening in our community. I attend several community events out in the community because we know that when it comes to young children, the child growth and development, we know that if we have, we have healthy children, we have healthy families. We have, we have healthy families when we have a healthy community. When we have a healthy community, we have what? A healthy county, and it continues to go on. So that tells us, we have to work together, we have to work through these differences to make sure that we're providing the best education and communities for our children to thrive because they have to be able to support themselves when they leave our system. So I hope we all will take that into mind, that our goal is our children and our families. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Darby, you have the last comment for tonight, and then we will move forward with the agenda.
Right, thank you. In response to about being on the board, this is the board counting, and the low test stores and other issues, and I have no apologies to nobody. I have served, and my father have served, the people of Williamsburg County. I'm not no plantation maker for anybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Darby. We will now have updates from the district. Dr. McNight, thank you so very much for being here to update us on the safety plan for our children. The board expressed a desire to know or how we're preparing for the safety of our children.
Good evening to the board, Adam, chair lady. Today, I want to briefly go over the Crisis Management Guide. If you can bear with me, it's kind of extensive. I will try to go through it as briefly as possible. The Crisis Management Guide, if I'm not mistaken, did each board member receive a hard copy? Because in this PowerPoint presentation, it just have the page that's listed, because it's, it's a lot of, lot of words, grammar, information in it, and I don't want to just read it verbatim to cut down time if you would like, okay? But the purpose of the guide is to ensure that Williamsburg County has an understandable, workable protection system plan in place to protect students, staff, members in the event of a disaster or threat that involve a school community. And this is just the introduction of the guide. This plan is developed to cover all foreseeable emergencies, including, and you see listed below. It is, those are foreseen, but as we know that there are all times that, things that unseen that we still have to cover. And keep in mind, this is just a generic, general guideline for the safety of our students. Intent and definition of the crisis management.
You can't hear me? I didn't understand the sign.
You can't hear me?
No, they wanted you to speak into the mic, and they just looked at me going like this.
Okay.
Speak into the mic, please.
And I apologize, I'm a mobile person. I apologize once again. The intent, could you hear me?
Is that better? Technology?
Yeah. You want the focus towards the head there, boy?
You want the hell one of you moves? There you go.
Thank you. Hello? Hello? Good? All right. The intent and definition of the crisis management. Crisis management is a central component of a comprehensive school safety, and definition as follows, the crisis management is part of a school division's approach to school safety, which focuses more narrowly on time-limited, problem-focused interventions to identity, confront and resolve the crisis, restore equilibrium, and support appropriate adaptive responses. In your, in your books, manuals, you will see that we have a listing of contact, emergency contact numbers, when an event happens, the numbers to be utilized. Also, you have a tree of designated personnel just in case of the absence of the superintendent. And we all know with any emergency, the first thing we should do is call nine-one-one. So even though we do have this guide, in case of emergency, crisis, one of the things that we should all do is notify nine-one-one. This is a simple little emergency equipment list. It's not all, it's not just that, it can be a little bit more dependent on whatever the school desired and what they see fits for their individual school, but this is just some of the general generic things that a school should have on their location. Crisis management team, each year, the principal develops a crisis management team. This team is basically there to, when a case of emergency, they come together, and they each one will have responsibilities and know what to do, when to do, and how to do it. And each one, they meet periodically within the school year. The crisis management team develop implement procedures, prevention, intervention, post ventures at all grade levels. And as I stated before, they are signed at the beginning by the administrator. Annual startup procedures for all schools. At the beginning, you know, you confirm the crisis management team, send out the list to my office, Office of Student Services, you make plans on when you're going to meet, you inform the faculty and staff of the plan, you provide them of the plan. Every year, you know, you have different personnel turnover, so you make sure that the phone tree is up to date. And those are some of the things that we meet at the beginning of the school year. Crisis Team Checklist. What to do first, administrator confirms the facts, administrators will gather the school crisis team, those are some of the names, but not limited to, who should be involved with the crisis team, and they decide what needs to be done immediately. They also revisit the plan and develop a plan for the particular school if needed. Sign tasks and determine what information should be disclosed to the proper person or personnel. How to respond to the crisis. Response needs to be made as quickly as possible, make sure that people, those people closest to the situation. Make sure that people, those people closest to the situation give the information, so it can take away all the unnecessary details, share, provide support, you know, with the counseling, and would be, identify those persons who is need an intense counseling, just in case of, and we discussed later on, of death, of death of a staff or a student. You may want to have counselors come from different schools to, to help bring counseling those students or staff. Ways to provide support, as soon as possible, speak to the faculty to give the information of what occurred, what happened, you explain briefly, excuse me, what happened without giving unnecessary details. You have designated rules and areas in the building to speak with people that's directly affected on the situation. The counselors have one-on-one sessions. Rules of the school personnel. These are the rules that the principals will use, and it is not limited to. Once again, these are just a basic generic procedure of what principal should do and what their responsibility should be, being that they are the leader of the school. This is the responsibility of the secretary. As we know, when we dealing with school, dealing with a school crisis, everyone should be involved, everyone have a responsibility. Everyone has a place, all the way down to the custodian. So it is important and imperative that each one know their responsibility. And this is just a little role of what the secretary or receptionist would do, but the main thing, what is, I like the last two, they should be available and they should assist where needed. Teachers' role, teachers have the kids, students with them. It always, we always like for them to be prepared, because when you prepare and something happen, you don't freeze. And we all know, when you freeze, important time has passed, things could happen. So we try to get them familiarized with what needs to be done, so when it happens, doing with the drills, and it comes to them naturally, because they have the kids, and if the kids see that they're afraid or uncertain, then, then they will be afraid and uncertain. So we're gonna try to cut that role out, but these are mainly the roles of the teachers, where they take the kids, what necessary materials to have with them. The counselor, school psychologists, social workers, and their roles be available. And most of the time with these counselors and school psychologists, their roles are come and play when they start with the reunification and the post-ventures of getting the kids and everybody back in order. Nurse role, these are the nurse role, be available, assist identify students that need to be assisted, make necessary medical referrals, contact the parents if the affected student, and also, once again, like I said, one of the most important things is assist where needed, not just saying that it's not my lane. Head custodians, these are the responsibilities of the custodian, custodians are not limited to. The custodians have meetings during the year of different equipments that's located at their particular school, dealing with gas, shut off valves, where the water, to shut off the water, etc. So they, they need to familiarize, or they, they all familiarized with these hazards, hazard places, so in case of emergency, they are know what to do, how to do. How to identify a crisis. You see on referred on seven and eight, eight, seven, and eight page. That's one of the things of, that we talked about how to identify, and you have three levels, two, a crisis, you know, level one is basically, it's trivial, it's minor. Level, level two is a little, a little bit more moderate, a little bit more severe, and level three is when you get into the point of you have to make sure that law enforcement is called there. Lockdown procedures, those are just the procedures that we take when time for a school to be locked down. What should incur, what the principals should be able to know, who the principal should be able to notify, once you know lockdown procedures. The district's office staff should know what's going on, because when it's locked down, all the doors are being shut, parents are being shut out, so the school, the office, the central office needs to know what is going on. You can have, you can have a total lockdown, or you can have a moderate lockdown, depends on the situation, but those are the instructions for lockdown procedures. Procedures for the fire, whether it's a level two or level three, and you can see there's the list and explain, and we also have monthly fire drills. One thing that's, that's law, the first ten days of school, it's mandatory that a fire drill must be held. We had a meeting with the local fire department, the county fire department, the fire marshal, the state fire marshal, the EMS, and the city chief, along with all the custodians and district facility staff, we had that meeting last week to discuss important informations of what to do and how to do it. So we always continue to keep up date on necessary laws and regulations. Bomb threat, explosions, procedures. And we all know that sometimes kids, sometimes kids just want to be kids and thinking they can do things to get out of a test, or just want to see if a plan is in action, but these are the procedures that we have in place, if there's a bomb threat. And we all know that when there's a bomb threat, we evaluate, we got to evaluate, evacuate, sorry. And SLED used to be called there from different areas, you know, we in a real area, they usually come from either Ori County, Florence, or from Clanton area, but they always come real quick, and these are all the procedures that we take in the meantime, what to do on those levels. Tornadoes, severe weather, hurricane procedures, those are the procedures that we take during inclement weather, hurricanes, we have prior knowledge, we, we keep a tab, focus on what's going on, because you have two to three days to prepare. Tornado is at a moment's notice, or you may be following, we may be following either at the district level, and we follow at the district level, level, inclement weather, and each school was equipped with a radio, weather radio. So we, we always monitor the weather, to know when should we evac, when, if we need to have an early dismissal, or it has been times where it was safer for the students to be able to stay extended time at school, rather than load them on the bus and put them in danger as going home. So these are one of the procedures that's in there to let you know which, which one is best, and we always like to think of the safety and air of the students, of the kids. Also, it's mandatory, we have, excuse me, particular drills during the school year. I know in October, we usually have something called a great shakeout, and that's procedures for the earthquakes, we get, I get the memo, send them out to the, to the schools, to the principals, we have that, that day, everyone participate. In the fall, we have a similar scenario, which deals with tornadoes. So we make sure we do, we do each scenario differently, but we want to make sure the kids know what to do. And I think if somewhere in there, you'll see, it's a diagram of a, of a student, how he or she should be positioned during a tornado. Those are just on page sixteen, you see the hazardous material incidents procedures. Utility, emergency procedures on page seventeen, and like I say, excuse me, we try to keep the all head custodians to be up to date on where everything is, so in case of emergency, they'll know how to or what to do. Against, these are crime reporting procedures, crimes that being presented, or crimes that's being done at the school, how to report it. And you got the different levels. Level one, also dealing with fights, level two may be a little bit more, two or one, and level three, we can say that it's a weapon involved or whatnot, but it also lets you know the procedures to take and reporting it, also with the property. Student walkout procedures, sometimes students, fortunately, we didn't have it, we don't have it at this time, but it also addresses what to do if students choose or want to have it walk out, what the administrators at that particular school should do. Student walkout procedure for handling fights in school settings. Also, you see the unwanted intruders, suspicious person procedures. We have, each year, we meet with the, with the administrators, and you know, with numbers being of, of staff being switched year by year, it started getting confusing when you start saying code blue, code red, and then, and then everybody goes, what code blue is? What code? So we start really kind of saying, see what it is, if it's intruding building, faculty is intruding building, lock your building, lock your doors, etc. Missing person, what to do during a student runaway or induction procedures. This is dealing with just the guns or weapons that might be reported on campus, sometimes sometimes the best reporter is the students. And once they're, when we're notified, it's weird that you can address that student without alarming everyone else. So those are just some type of procedures, depending on the situation and how to address it, and, and we'll deal, and deal with them once the weapon is compensated, or we need to have a search for it. Just, just letting you know about what to do in case of student death or serious injury on campus, and, and once again, that's where our school counselors, school psychologists, the social workers are very vital to those situations as well. Natural causes, natural, natural causes, accidental or suicidal. And we have things in place for those issues as well. Hostile situation, there's on page twenty-four and twenty-six, if, if we incur situation, deal with a hostile situation, those are things that we, that we would do in case, but not limited to. Once again, commutable diseases guidelines for handling body fluids in the school, which we all go through, OSHA, training at beginning, bloodborne passages, all those are at, one of part of the annual startup school year. Accident, serious injury, and procedures, you know, kids play, you have the smaller kids on the playground, what happens if there's a serious injury, what to do, and we all know that we need to notify our school nurse, and our school nurse let us know what actions to take, as well as calling on 911 for emergency services. Off-campus emergency, these are things that happen, just in case if we off-campus, but it's still a school-sponsored event, what procedures to take and what to do and who to contact, those are still, should be on page twenty-nine through thirty. Building search procedures, as stated before, that's if, if something is being reported, particularly in the classroom, or maybe in the restroom or not, procedures what to, what to do in case of that, and for us to be able to identify and to bring the safety back to the school. And of course, you know, we carry kids to and from school daily. The bus drivers are the first to see them, they are the ones that should start the kids' day off by just simply saying good morning. But in case of an unseen accident, whether it's a fender bender or major, it's all serious, and these are procedures that the driver takes and the district takes to ensure that everything is followed by law. And briefly, that's just the synopsis of the crisis management guide. I do want to let you know as well that we do have a, we do have five, we usually have four SRO officers speaking with the sheriff department, with, with the sheriff this year, he's providing us an extra SRO, which he's gonna pay for, that extra officer will be located, located at King Street High School. So you will have two officers, SRO at King Street High School, one on the east, one on the west, but they may still be simultaneously. You will have one at Hemingway High School, but that officer will be also going between Hemingway High School and the middle school, being that they are on the same campus. King Street Middle, Magnus School, we have their own SRO officer, and C.E. Murray Elementary and Middle, they will have their own SRO officer. We meet with the, all principals, assistant principals, along with me, and the sheriff and all the SRO, we meet, we will meet again to, for everyone to know what, what responsibility of the SRO officer is and what their purposes would be. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McNight, for sharing the safety plan with us. Dr. McNight, was there anything about an active shooter?
Yes, yes, we, it's law that the school district conducts two active shooter drills per year, one in the, we, we have one in the fall, and we have one in the spring. I also have for the staff, we, we have scheduled, I have scheduled a virtual active shooter meeting with SLED for September seventh and eighth. We provided those two days because we know that the elementary kids and the primary kids, with the teacher, they get out at a different time than the high school and the middle school, so I wanted to stagnate, and along with some of the high school, with other extracurricular, extracurricular activity that goes on, they may be able to log in on the, on the day prior. So we do have those trainings already set up for it.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Dr. Williams, you have a report for us from the South Carolina Department of Education? I'm sorry, Mr. Barrino, I'm not looking at my agenda. Mr. Barrino.
Good evening, members of the board, district guests. Going to be a real brief, just like to give a brief update concerning the status of our school murders between C.E. Murray and King Street High School. Just want to say, all projects to ensure the safety, security, comfort of our staff and students. Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me. All projects to ensure the safety, security, and comfort of our staff and students will be completed, will be completed prior to August fifteenth. Is that better? Right now, painting was a major project, we are completing interior painting on the west campus, just probably another week maybe. King Street High School east campus is complete, all classrooms at C.E. Murray have been painted, and our muralist, Mr. Stan Ridgeway, is working very diligently to complete the murals and the halls. This was a large project, and Mr. Ridgeway may not be complete prior to the fifteenth, but he has assured us he will be working nights and weekends to expedite the task. We have new student furniture for Grillaville Elementary, C.E. Murray Middle Elementary, and our new freshman academy. We have new student furniture for Grillaville Elementary, C.E. Murray Middle Elementary, and our new freshman academy. It's been delivered, and, uh, most is currently in the designated classrooms. Um, office furniture and teacher desks should be here mid-September. Signing, signage changes and graphics have been finalized, and, uh, change out scheduled to start next week. Um, please note, we're working to make sure all party needs are met prior to our August fifteenth deadline.
Question?
You have a question?
Yes.
Barrino.
Yes.
What type of pro-, what type of income project, um, project, um, are we looking at, projected image? All of that, that you have uncovered?
I, I'm sorry, I didn't quite understand what you're asking there, when you said income project.
What is the projected income to cover all of this expenses?
The costs.
Yes.
Um, we're still working on that, the painting was a hundred, around a hundred and sixty-five thousand.
Now you say you're working on it, and, and all of this is to be completed by August the fifteenth, and you don't have a-
The projects I've, the projects I've mentioned will be completed, yes, August fifteenth.
And you don't have a, a projected income amount, and, and, and you're saying that this will be completed by August fifteenth?
I do have numbers on these particular projects I didn't mention.
And what are they?
The painting is about a hundred and sixty-five thousand. The furniture was about one point two million.
Uh, one point what?
One point two million. The signage, um-
Do you have this in writing, sir?
Not with me.
Or, or you're just talking out of your head?
I-
Would you provide some type of, uh, and, um, something in writing with this?
I would be glad to provide something in writing.
Thank you.
I will forward this information to Doc Wilder, and let her forward it to you and the proper manager.
Mr. Barrino?
Sir.
Mr. Darby?
Yes, um, the air conditioner, I know last year when I visited schools, there were a lot of problems with those, uh, air conditioner specs that senior high, a lot of those classes were real hot.
We have changed out, um, we've changed out a number of units. The problem we're facing with HVAC stuff, um, a normal bard unit, that's the big unit that goes on the outside, that feeds area in. It has a twenty-four week lead time. If we order today, it'll be six months before we get a new one out. So we are, we're using Band-Aids, um, we're at the mercy of the supply chain. We're doing everything we can, we've actually bought some portable units.
Would you hold the mic, we can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry, sir. We, uh, we've actually bought some portable units. If we have a room go down, we have a portable unit, we'll put in that classroom till we can get compressors, motors, get a new unit, to try to address the immediate needs. But I don't wanna sound like I'm making excuses, I go to principals all the time, same thing, and I say, I'm sorry, I, I, I just can't. I can't do it, we can't get them. Um, and again, it, it sounds like an excuse, but I cannot, I cannot address those issues, and I don't have the materials to do it right.
So, ours take a long time to come in?
Uh, most times with HVAC stuff, eight weeks minimum on just about anything. Compressors, motors, uh, sometimes we get lucky, we've got some preferred vendors, call them up and say, hey, can you help us out? And they may say, well, I got one sitting back here, I was holding for somebody, but, you know, we'll, we'll help you. Mr. Montgomery is very good with that, so I'll give him a pat on the back.
Thank you, Mr. Barrino.
Yes, ma'am.
I feel comfortable, Mr. Barrino, in saying that, um, any board member who chooses may go and look at the buildings. If you wanna see the paint job, the working. I do need to remind board members that, um, if more than four people go, that becomes a board meeting. And so unless we agree and decide at a time, we all wanna go together, um, please go no more than two or three at a time. And I would suggest you contact the superintendent, so she will let the principals be aware that you are coming to, uh, tour the school.
Yes, I would invite any board member to, uh, please, please go to C.E. Murray. Uh, the muralist, as I said, Stan Ridgeway, has done an absolute amazing job, I wish I had half his talent, I'd, I'd be doing something else today, I'm sure. But, but he's very talented, and he's done a wonderful job there, it looks absolutely awesome.
The science labs, um, the old chemicals and stuff in these science labs, are they up to date?
The science labs at the high school level here, yes, we're, we're good. I'm sorry, sir?
Hemingway?
Uh, Hemingway is up to date. Uh, Murray, because of the transfer of the high school, those labs are being repurposed to accommodate middle and elementary.
Thank you so very much for coming tonight and for providing the update on the merger.
Thank you.
Update from the South Carolina Department of Education, Dr. Wills. Thank you, Ms. Mack, for being here, we do recognize your presence.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Chairwoman Cannon, board members, uh, State Superintendent Spearmint visited C.E. Murray last Thursday for a merger update, and I wanna express some of her thoughts and compliments to this district. Uh, she has total confidence in the students and parents and leadership of Williamsburg County and this community. We all realize how hard change is, and we totally appreciate the way that you've banded together to make this merger successful. As we look across the state, as a number of districts are merging, this has been one of our most successful efforts. Uh, Superintendent Spearmint highly praises the leadership of Dr. Rose Wilder, as well as expressing a tremendous appreciation to Senator Sam and Representative McKnight for their help with funding for these issues, issues and infrastructure. Uh, Superintendent Spearmint thanks former C.E. Murray principal, Ms. Harris, and current C.E. Murray principal, Mr. Chandler, as well as food service director and co-guys for a great tour and lunch last week. I feel totally, uh, confident, I've been working across the district since mid-May with Ms. Barrino, Mrs. Dr. McKnight. Uh, these gentlemen and their staffs have been totally professional, worked hard every day, we will be ready for the opening of the school. Uh, I do encourage you, we should finish branding King Street High around August fourth, August third. Um, along with the mu-, muralists, I, I encourage you to go to King Street High and take a look at that state of the artwork that will be up there once we finish this project. Um, I want to personally thank the citizens, the children of Williamsburg County District, uh, just for your, um, your mannerisms, your dedication. And, and I know this is a hard challenge, but you, you work with us every way, I've been impressed every day, and I report that back to Ms. Mack, my immediate boss, as well as, uh, State Superintendent Spearmint. So thank you for all that you've done for us as well during this merger.
Question, you said, how do you, how do we pronounce your last name?
Wills.
So you participated with the gathering or the meeting, what Ms. Cannon did not inform, uh, well, on last week? You participated with that meeting also?
Yes, sir.
How much money is the state giving the district for building purpose, like, um, building maintenance, building improvements?
Uh, Mr. Reverend Darby, I can get you that exact figure, I can have it for you tomorrow. I do not have that ingrained in my, most of my work is boots on the ground.
Yes, sir.
With, uh, your leadership team here, principals, directors, and, uh, students. But I can get you that information in writing.
Oh, okay, thank you, sir.
And I will do so.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, yes. In your opinion, uh, how is the merger going as far as being completed by the designated time?
Uh, the merger will be on schedule, and I can tell you this, uh, from my opinion, um, it's been wonderful. Uh, when you have a band the size of your band at King Street High School, and I've seen those kids work in the morning as hard as the football team on the other side of the campus, uh, it's just unbelievable, uh, for me, cause I've, I've been at bigger schools, but I've never seen a band that dedicated, that big, and that carries over also to, uh, Coach Smith and his football team. Uh, just, just a great spirit among the student athletes that, uh, I hope carries over with the parents and the community. You know, once again, I say this, we know this is, uh, one of the hardest things to do in life, come together and stay together. But we appreciate the tenacity that we approached this project with, so thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wills. Thank everyone for being here, we thank you all for your comments, questions that were asked, we will have an answer, and you will receive an answer via written correspondence. If there are no final comments, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. Mr. Darby?
The manager, I'd like the record to show that, uh, I wanted the record to show that I'm not dictating to any board member. I'd like to say I represent people in second slavery handed in eighteen sixty-five, thirteen.
I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moves, adjournment.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded, this meeting is now adjourned.